Who's presenting that? Mandy?
It's cold in here.
Hmm?
It's cold in here.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the school committee meeting for April 5th. Like to call this meeting to order. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Dr. Lepri is unable to be with us tonight, so I have the pleasure of being in the hot seat. May I ask if there's any public comment? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. I'd like to start with the MCAS update, if I may. MCAS season has started, and our students in grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and 10 have been the, in the annual testing experience. So they are, they have started the English Language Arts Tests in March for the high school and currently for the intermediate school and the middle school. So as you know, all of our students, except for English learners who are in their first year in the country, are expected to test for MCAS ELA. So I'll start with NIS. Nearly all third graders completed the ELA MCAS testing last week with very few makeup sessions to go. Today, Tuesday, the fourth graders completed session one of ELA MCAS and will finish tomorrow. Next week, grade five will complete sessions one and two of ELA MCAS and that, so that nearly all of the ELA testing will be completed before the break, with the exception of some makeups. IDSC teachers completed the MCAS alt binders for four students who did not take the grade, who don't take the grade level MCAS testing but use the portfolios. Their portfolios were painstakingly built all school year, reviewed by the Director of Special Services and by families, and have been sent off to the state. The NIS admin and teachers are very proud of their growth and the teachers' very diligent work. Overall, students are persevering through each of the test sessions, demonstrating great stamina, because the average length of an ELA test session is about two and a half hours. So if you can imagine, that's a, a long time for students to sit and to be testing. At CPS, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders started their testing today and will continue tomorrow. There are three IDSC student portfolios for the MCAS alt that were submitted for review last week. And at CPS, there are 20 students who are in their first year of English, as English learners. So while their peers were testing, they participated in a Learn to Skate program at the Nantucket Ice Rink. So they had that opportunity. At, at the high school, in the third week of March, all of grade 10 tested for ELA except for six students, two of whom are out of district placement, and four of whom are out on medical leave. In addition, there were five grade 11 students who are new to the district this year and have to take the MCAS because they did not take it with 10th grade last year. One IDSC student portfolio was submitted for the MCAS alt last week. And during the month of May, all students of these same grades will participate in the math MCAS. And finally, grade five, eight, and 10 will take, or nine, actually, in our case, will take the science, technology, engineering test and biology for grade 10, or grade nine, excuse me, for the first time. So I certainly will provide additional updates in late May after the math MCAS and in early June after our science MCAS. Any questions? For enrollment, our numbers are up by eight from 1,685 to 1,693. Our withdrawals are from students that we know are moving out of state. So that is specifically, we're not looking at withdrawals for dropout reasons or anything else. So students who are moving out of state. And our enrollments are up for students who have been registered and are starting school as we speak.
Great. Thank you. Rocky, you have any questions? No? Laura? There's Marla. One question on the MCAS, for the students who are in IDSC and the portfolio, and maybe you can't answer that, this tonight, but I'm just curious, does the state outline what each student, is it per individual? And how are they graded, I guess?
These are portfolios. So the teachers, the IDSC teachers, put together, they have a list of standards, and they put together with evidence, written evidence, et cetera, around what the students have been able to complete to, to reach those standards. And they submit that to, to the state that will, is equivalent to an MCAS alt exam. But rather than students sitting for an exam, because students in our IDSC can't necessarily sit for an exam, at least they have a portfolio of work that they have been able to, to complete, and it shows their progress and their, and their achievement on those standards that are for them.
And are we able to look over the course of the years, assuming that we've had those students from elementary through high school?
Yeah.
To see and?
See their progress.
See their progress.
Great.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, moving on to presentations and discussions of interest. We have some more students that will be receiving the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. So I'd like to ask Mrs. Vassal to come up to the podium, please, and introduce your students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the school committee, thank you for allowing me to be here. I, I first want to recognize my biggest fan, Mr. Bobby Planzer. I appreciate that he's always here to give us support for our school committee meetings. So, nice job. I knew you were here for me, right, Bobby? It's always a pleasure, and I say this all the time, to recognize our students. But this time of year, most especially to recognize our students for scholarship, their college acceptances, and the accomplishments that our seniors have done. This is an exciting, it's an exciting time. It's a short time that we have left. I think someone said today, eight weeks for our seniors. And so the last time that I was here with the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, we thought we only had one recipient. Well, the DESI was a little slow in their reporting, because we found out that we have two more students. So we're very excited to recognize them tonight. And I'm going to go old fashioned and start ladies first. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Erin McCormick, who has received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. And I'd like to just briefly say that when Erin and I met, she did say that she has an interest in Framingham State. I'm not sure if she's committed yet. Maybe she'll let us know that. But this absolutely will help with the cost for Framingham State. And I looked up at some of the classes she's taken, and she's actually taken guitar and culinary. So maybe that might be swaying her in her direction. So Erin McCormick. And I'd like to recognize her parents as well, Deanna and Richard McCormick, and thank them for the work that they've done to support Erin.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Can we just ask Erin a question? Could you?
Oh, sure.
Do you mind going up to the podium? That'd be great. Sorry to put you on the spot.
It's not just me.
It's not just you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're thinking of doing or plans?
Um, well, I'm in between schools right now. I'm not committed anywhere. I'm thinking about Bridgewater State and Framingham State. But I want to go into like a business administration or business management course.
Well, this is a wonderful achievement.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And our second recipient is Zachary Hudzik. Zachary is, I, I have to tell you that when I called, I called the students into my office to let them know, and this is one of the first times that I've seen like a huge smile on Zach's face. And it really, it really made my day. Zach had mentioned that he was considering going into the workforce, but I kind of saw a little spark. So I think now with this scholarship, he might be swayed to think about something different. I also took a look at Zach's schedule and the classes that he was taking. He's taken ceramics, which I'm very jealous about, and he also takes guitar. And he takes forensic science, and I think that's something that he's really interested in. So please help me congratulate Zachary, and I'd like to recognize his parents. I apologize, Mrs. Hudzik. I'm probably going to butcher your name. I think it's Brian and Najida? Nadeshta. Okay, I was close. Zachary.
Do you mind just going to the podium just? I'll, I'll ask you the same questions I asked Erin, if you wouldn't mind just sharing some of the thoughts that you have post-high school.
I'm not sure what I want to do. I wasn't planning on going into college, but now that I've gotten this, it's starting to change my mind. So I definitely am thinking about that now.
How's the forensic science class?
It's great.
You solve any murders or mysteries or is that you?
I mean, I'm trying.
Because there's a need for people like that.
Cold cases, right?
That's terrific. Well, congratulations. This is a great honor.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Erin and Zach. Very proud of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vassal. So we have library and media presentations tonight from our MPS librarians. Are you coming up to, are you all coming up together? Jennifer Rabel and Jill Suppanat and Rebecca Hickson? Hickman? Why am I saying Hickson? I know it's not.
I get kids emails, so. I'm so sorry.
Mary McGinnis is not here. I take it Jackie Genison?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for having us. Unfortunately, our Nantucket Elementary and Nantucket Intermediate librarians could not be here tonight, so I am presenting on their behalf. So this is, these are some pictures here of the elementary library. It's a really welcoming place for all the littles. And some new initiatives that Mary McGinnis has had in the library this year. One of them is called "You've Been Booked", and this is a new picture book program that she is introducing next month in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. One bag will start out in each grade, pre-K to grade two, with different picture book. These books will be new to the library collection and ones that haven't been shared with their readers yet. This will make them super special and new to teachers to share and read aloud. After a teacher reads the book, they will pass it to another classroom who hasn't read it, with a reminder not to forget to put it back in the bag for its journey around the school. She's also worked very hard, as all our librarians have this year, at increasing our, our collection of diverse titles with diverse authors and characters who reflect the students who are in our schools. So they've been really working hard on that. Some events and accomplishments. This year, she had a March Madness. They're in their fourth year of March Madness, the challenge at NIS. Students and teachers love this reading challenge. It comes off the heels of Read Across America, and it's a great way to make the month of March pass by quickly. Students and teachers love to see which book is the final winner. And then we had the Scholastic Book Fair, which was also a success. And we get a lot of books and other materials, like these magnetic boards, from the proceeds of the Scholastic Book Fair. And then here's some student work, some of the, the library skills that students are working on, like alphabetizing and labeling parts of the book. And there's a biography bulletin board. Each year, students love this bulletin board. It sparks their interest and leads to great discussions about each individual. The board begins their lesson on biographies for grades K through two, which then leads us into Black History Month, President's Day, and Women's History Month. And here's some more student work. Lots of great pictures. And some hope, hope and dreams. The biggest goal for an elementary librarian is to have her kids love reading. So this is the NIS library. Jackie Genison is our librarian there this year. The Scholastic Book Fair was held at NIS as well, and the library received over $4,000 in points to purchase books and other library materials. Some more pictures of the books. It takes a lot of volunteer, volunteers to make that happen. Grade three has been focusing on the social-emotional literacy curriculum in library. They read, read together "Bad Case of Tattletongue", "Learning About Self-Control", and the book "My Mouth is a Volcano". Grades in four and five have been learning a lot of library skills, reference sources like maps and encyclopedias, learning research vocabulary to give them some of those skills to go into middle school. They learned about intellectual property and plagiarism. They created their own invention where they could patent, copyright, or trademark something. And they had a, a trial, a plagiarism trial. And some of their accomplishments, again, book fair and purchases, parent volunteers, and future aspirations. She wants to, to really work on the website at NIS, the library website, where kids have access to educational learning apps. She'd like an ongoing children's journal subscription, so we'll be talking about that. And again, she's working as Mary has, with creating more diversity in the collection as well. Any questions that I could answer? I don't know if I can answer them all from NIS and NIS. All right, so we're going to move over to Jill and Becky, who have a lot of great stuff to share.
Hi, thank you for having us. I do have to say, I'm really excited. We've had a phenomenal six months together with my new sidekick here. So I'm in my fourth year, and I'm very happy to be back in the library after last year with COVID. And one of my kind of goals when I came on a few years ago was to really expand the hours in the library and be available to our students as much as possible. And with the help of our administration, we've been able to do that. So Monday through Thursday, we are open 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Fridays, we open at 7:00 a.m., but we're out of there just like everybody else on Fridays. We have a lot of library statistics, so after two years of COVID and the library being closed, we really wanted to make sure that kids were welcomed back, they felt safe, and it was a space that they knew they could attend. We have a sign-in system. We have four iPads. So when students enter the library, they use their student ID and they select a reason as to why they're there, which gives us all this lovely data that we provided you. This is just a typical day. On average, we see about 30 to 40 kids in the morning. We have seen a little bit of an uptick with the cold mornings. There was one day, I almost had heart failure because we had about 60 kids in there. After school, not as wildly popular as we would like, but hopefully we can build that. We see about 10 to 20 kids that will stay and work independently. Some are just, we have a lot of little sixth graders that just love to hang out on the high school side and chit chat. Which is great. I love that they feel safe to be there. Our lunches, as you can see, are wildly popular. We do five lunch periods for grade six through 12 in the course of a day. And throughout those five periods, we're averaging on a day about 110 to 130 kids in there for lunch. Bobby's a frequent flyer. The Hudzicks are in there all the time. Erin's in there all the time. And then looking for a book, because, you know, we are a library, we have about five to 10 kids on average a day. However, what that number doesn't represent is when whole classes come in and visit us, or if we bring a book cart to the classrooms. If a whole class comes in, we typically don't have them sign in. That just takes way too much time. In addition, we, which is not part of this, we do go into classrooms quite a bit. Most recently, some of those examples, I created a research guide to help the sixth grade social studies teachers with their religion project. Jill has been going into high school. You did science to do a plagiarism activity, and then social studies, she created a Civil War project guide for them with research. And we also do Loner Chromebooks, which is always incredibly busy in the morning, particularly after vacations or weekends. I'm not going to go into detail. Obviously, everyone can read this, but these are our numbers by month as to why the students have come into the library. The other category, just to kind of simplify things, includes after-school tutoring, if students ever come in for testing purposes, if they need a gym alternative location, school to career. So there's a lot of reasons that kids will come to visit us, and that's in the other. But you can see lunch on the monthly. 2,364 kids had lunch with us in March. Is this me or you? I'm not on the right page. So some of our circulation statistics, you know, like I said, after COVID being closed, Jill and I kind of sat down, we work together. So even though I'm CPS and she's NHS, we are both. And our goals were to obviously increase our circulation and get kids back in. Obviously, we couldn't use the 19 to 21 data, so we went back to 2018. And as of March 31st, we have far surpassed our goal in terms of circulation. So we're really, really excited about that. And there's little things that we've done, which we will talk about. Now I'm going to let Jill talk for a minute.
All right. Hi. I'm Jill Suppanat, and this is my first year in the library, and I'm thrilled to be there after 29 years as a Spanish teacher at Nantucket High School. So I love being able to work with these students in another capacity and, and really enjoying my time and, and what I hope I'm contributing at, in the library space. So diversifying the collection, that's one of our articulated goals, actually, on our, our professional development plan. And you can see that we've been adding titles that fit in these subcategories, as well as just diverse titles. So we're up to almost 4,000 diverse titles in our library collection, and that's at 44%. And you've got to understand, that also includes all those, we've got old Nantucket books that are, you know, that are bringing that, so you know, obviously, I'd love it to be 75% diversity, but we've got, you know, our old classics and everything. So even with that in our collection, that's a really strong number. So we're really excited about that, and we're going to continue to diversify as we go. Yep, world language title? Yeah, I think I'm good. All right. Also, world language, we have a whole world language section. It was a very small section before. I've been working really hard. We've both been working really hard to build that out. And I've requested donations and suggestions from my friends in the Bulgarian, Russian, Portuguese, Spanish community. So we've been acquiring titles as we go, so that students, even when they're newcomers here, will have books to read, because literacy in any language is literacy. And it's, if they're going to be fluent readers and speakers and in their own language, they're going to transfer those skills as they learn English. So this is really important to us. So that's a picture of our world language shelf, which we hope to expand as we go. Back to Becky, back to me.
So I've also, well, we've worked really hard to form a partnership with the Athenaeum, and we work closely with Leslie Malcolm. In the past, pre-COVID, I feel like everything is either pre-COVID, post-COVID, we used to actually take a field trip downtown, and every student would get a library card. So we had to improvise a little this year. The Athenaeum was not open to hosting groups at the beginning of the school year. So Leslie was great. She came probably every day for a week and a half and gave every middle school student a library card. There was a lot of cross-referencing. They do take the students in kindergarten, but as we can see from our enrollment numbers, how many students have we added, and then they lose the card. But every student has a library card in hand, and then Leslie was great. She came and presented everything that is free to all of our kids with a library card that the Athenaeum has to offer. On the horizon is, we're working, waiting on approval, whoever is in charge of that. May 13th, we want to take the sixth graders down and do kind of a little combination scavenger hunt, which I also used to do when I was part of the sixth grade team, but incorporate the Athenaeum so that every student can go there with their card, if they still have it, and go upstairs and actually go into the beautiful space that we have. So many of our students have just, they don't even know where it is. Take them into Mitchell's and Bookworks. Possibly, we've done some partnerships with the, who do I want to say? The Whaling Museum, the Historical Association, with some primary sources. And we've gone into the Fair Street Museum, and they've analyzed documents. So we're hoping that that will work, and we've, the woman who wrote the Lookbook, Barbara Tibbetts, has reached out to me, and the Lookbook is a little outdated. So she kind of wants to do a reverse scavenger hunt and give the students the old books and have them find what's missing, and then add new and contribute to the new publication. So we're working on having that all happen on May 13th. And then we're back to Jill.
All right. So we, in our efforts to really encourage our students to reclaim the space after they've been denied access to the space all during COVID and, and remote learning and hybrid learning. And then when we got them back in school, the library was closed because there were no gatherings, there were no after-school. So we brainstormed. So I wanted to do something around the holidays, and I'm like, oh, you know, what can we do to get the kids in? So we did some morning holiday movies, and we did it twice a week, and had hot chocolate and snacks and little games for them to, to compete. And then we got a little more competitive once, that was really successful, once they figured out what was going on. And then, so when February came around, and a lot of the students were like, when are we going to do hot chocolate again? We thought, well, what can we do a theme on? And of course, it was Olympic time, so we did some Olympic live streaming events for the Olympics on the big screen, and then again, hot chocolate. And then we ordered, what do you, the curling, a little tabletop curling game, and let them do that, and we had a couple of other little, little games for them to compete, and, you know, just fun little silly prizes. And then we have, oh yeah, on Thursday, this is hot off the press, we're having an Easter egg hunt. So we're going to do mornings Easter egg hunts, and we're going to hide them behind the books and, you know, just kind of try to incorporate the books and put little book lover stickers and things like that in the little plastic eggs. So we have some plans for that. And the cornhole tournament, we have tabletop cornhole as well in May. Again, just to get them in having fun in the library. And speaking of which, this student, you, some of you may have heard, this, this originated, this student was having a concert downtown a week or two ago, and he asked me if he could hang up some of his, you know, posters to advertise his concert. And he's been my student since he came here from Haiti, and I was, encouraged him with open arms. And then, you know, a couple of days before, I'm like, you know, why don't we promote your concert? And maybe during, he always has lunch in the library, and I was like, why don't you bring your guitar and play during lunch? And we'll make it like a Coffee House concert. And he was thrilled. His band teacher was thrilled, which he had banned during the lunch block, so that all just worked out magically. And it was amazing. It was an amazing, just sporadic. He played for all three lunch periods of the high school lunches. And it was so great that we decided to make it a concert series. So every Friday, we have a different, and you can see in the middle, that's, that's our student from, that's our student from this past Friday, and Gabe Zinser, and who is a totally different genre of music, but such an amazing, talented young man. And so we've got, this week, I, who knows? We've got all sorts of things lined up.
Gabe came, if I can interrupt, Gabe came in with a guitar, but then he also came in with a mandolin.
Yeah.
And then he started wandering through the tables.
Mariachi style.
It was, it was great.
I was, it was, it was a hit. It was a hit. And this is another wonderful thing that just emerged over the past few months. We've had National Honor Society students come in and start tutoring after school, and it hasn't been as big of a success as they wanted. The kids are great, the students that come to tutor, but just no one shows up to be tutored. And then I noticed Ms. Evelyn, Evelyn McKeckern, was coming in with some of our English learners during advisory and bringing them into my space, and she was trying to tutor all these kids in different subjects. And all of a sudden, I looked around at my advisory group, which is a bunch of seniors, a few of whom are bilingual and needed community service hours. And I said, hey, let's put these two, let's put this together. So we've been doing bilingual tutoring, and we separate subject by table. And so this is some of my senior advisees, sitting here with some of the newcomer ELs, and going through how to, you know, do a poster project in a science class and how to do some of the math. Because the math, when you're coming from a different country, is, is even structured differently. And so I, I just, I actually had to walk out of the room a couple of times. I was having like a teacher moment, like I was tearing up because I was so proud of what my advisees were doing, not alone, not, I mean, let alone what the, the ELs were learning from someone who, you know, spoke their language and knew their culture. And it was, it was an amazing thing. So I'm sorry, I'm going to try not to cry right now. All right. And we started an after-school book club. I do that on Mondays. It's a small club. It's a little bit bigger than in this picture, but not everybody comes every week. We have kind of an alternative book club. So we don't read the same book, because the kids have, you know, all these years working with teenagers, I realized they don't really like to do that. And they have to do that in their English class anyway. So it's really a book lovers' club. So they come and they bring the books they're reading and we, we recommend books to each other. They tell me what I need to order for the library and what they love and what their friends are loving. We watch book trailers sometimes on the big screen. And I've learned so much from them and what an amazing group. And the boys that aren't in this picture are really into manga, the Japanese, it comes from the anime. And they've taught me so much about manga and helped us select titles for that genre that we, you know, needed to know more about. So we're lucky.
And we've also done some book tastings, which I always used to do in my ELA classroom. So this is a way to get our teachers to come in with their whole classes and we set the library up with candles, take candles, tablecloths. We didn't do snacks this year because it was still COVID in September, but they come in and it's kind of like musical chairs or speed dating with a book. So they get up and they just wander around and they have to just read for a minute and then decide, yes, no, maybe. Usually after the book tastings, you kind of see our circulation numbers just really jump up. And then we have visiting authors, so excited. This Friday, we are welcoming K.A. Holt. She's coming to us from Austin, Texas. And I can't wait. Her books are great. And that's the picture down on the left is the middle school. And then Elizabeth Acevedo is coming to the high school on April twenty-eighth and we're really excited. Catherine's nodding. We're very excited about that. And we couldn't, we couldn't do any of our authors without the Nantucket Book Foundation. Mary Haft and company, they really are the they're the brains behind, the brains and the money. And then they work with us to bring in relevant authors to our kids. So I'm Friday, and we actually, I've invited the new school on Friday. So the new school is coming, the upper grades. And they're going to do a whole class, a whole school presentation from eight fifteen to nine fifteen. Please come if you can. And then after that, in the library, they're going, she, K.A. or Carrie Anne will be hosting some small groups with fifteen or so students to just talk to them in, in a casual, informal setting. We also did the book fair. And we did very well. I was pleasantly surprised. Unfortunately, I find that most of the spending occurs on the little tchotchke stuff in the front. But if it buys us books, I'll take it. We ended up taking, we kind of split our profit. Jill and I try very hard, the majority of our books, we use Bookworks. Anytime we buy, they give us a great discount. The books are here in three days. So when we took our profits, we did kind of half and half. We spent a lot with Scholastic, but then we opted to take cash so that we can use that down at Bookworks and support them. And, oh, I just did this. This just kind of came to me at the beginning of the year, just doing kind of like a checkout challenge. And ironically enough, our PE teacher's homeroom is the homeroom that has won both months that we've done this. So they, I just treated them in the library to doughnuts. And I think this time we're going to do lunch, so they'll maybe get pizzas, although that's up in the air. My, my two big readers, I said, you guys can decide what you get, if it's pizza or doughnuts. So, but that's been fun. I have a couple of other teachers, where were we in the standings? How were we doing? And then I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
So we're kind of segueing into the, the end, near the end of our presentation for our hopes and dreams. So we have just ordered some podcasting equipment. We're hoping to set up a podcasting booth and station that's going to be available for students to sign out or for teachers for class. Well, it's going to be hard to get a class. But yeah, so we're really excited about this. We consulted some local experts in the field before we ordered this equipment, well, Ms. Hickman ordered this equipment. And then we're really hoping to add on some video, updated video equipment, green screen. Maybe GoPros for the students to sign out and document cameras for the teachers. So, and a weather station. We have a lot of things that are our hopes and dreams for the very, hopefully near future. We'll see how it works out. But we're very excited. We're both on the EdTech I L T Committee. So we've been really trying to stay on top of emerging technologies and make sure our students have access to and, and teachers have access to everything, along with our partnership with Jen Erickson and her crew, who are have an office right in their space. So that makes everything so wonderful. Thank you so much.
I know, I did have this wonderful idea. I'm like, oh, let's get a drone. And then I talked to Emily Clarkson, who's the expert, and she was like, you really need to have a license to do that. And I was like, okay, never mind. But these are just some of our displays. We wanted to include pictures. That's our monthly calendar that has kind of fun holidays. What's going on around school. We try to have monthly displays on the book carts for whatever is happening. So Halloween, Veterans Day. Jill has a great display on the high school side now, which is in support of Ukraine. So it's all yellow book spines and then all blue book spines or vice versa. Blue and yellow, sorry. So it, that's really cool. So we try to do that. And then in addition to that, on the CPS side, on our two screens, we have scrolling announcements. And then on both of the screens, there's always some sort of a live animal cam happening. It's either pandas or the sloth preschool in Costa Rica. Sometimes we have puppies, but the kids do like to come in. And then this is just shouting us out, because why not? These are just some conferences that we attended. And I think one of our proudest things that have happened is that we have now been officially brought into the fold of the Nantucket Book Foundation. So Jill has been elected to the Education Committee and the Literary Committee, and then I have been elected as a Board of Directors.
Congratulations.
Yes, we are very excited. Any questions?
I'm sure we do. Please, please stay up if you don't mind. Rocky, no questions?
I don't have any questions, but you guys, it's awesome. I mean, I want to come and hang out in the library. But it's so vibrant and, and wonderful. Everything that you're doing, it's really exciting. I can't stop smiling. It's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, wow. I wish this had all happened when I was in high school.
I do too.
This is great. I'm very happy and very content.
She was my student. Oh my goodness, and a wonderful one at that.
Thank you.
Catherine.
I just wanted to mention as like a student who like frequents the library almost every day, you guys do such a great job with everything you do. Like, I sincerely believe now that the library has become a part of student culture at the school. I know students love the library. It's so much fun. Like, I was talking with my friend the other day of how impressed we were, like, with all the work you guys do and all the creative ideas that you guys have. And I just think you guys do such a great job. So just keep it up. Thank you for all you do.
Doesn't get better than that, does it?
If I may, I have a question, but also I want to say in the three years that I've been here, I have seen a vast improvement. And of course, COVID was in the middle of that, so we have to, we have to consider that. But the fact is, just the amount of opportunities that our students have going into the library is incredible. And congratulations to you for that. You've done a fantastic job.
My question is, do you have interlibrary loan opportunities for students? Either through, with, with the Athenaeum or even other libraries outside? So at the Athenaeum, they were taught how to log in using their library card. And then they will put a hold on a book, send me the email. And then I will go down and get the book for them, deliver it to them. And then I have a basket where they can return the book and I will take it back so that they don't have to. I mean, obviously, I encourage them to go to the Athenaeum, but a lot of our kids can't. We haven't, it hasn't been as well utilized this year as it was in the past. And I don't know if just our collection is that great. That's it. Okay, I'm going with that.
And one more question too.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, this isn't really interlibrary loan, but also I'm kind of committed to, we're making that move at the middle school, hoping that they'll bring that up with them. And I'm also committed to, and I started with one class, and I want to do out, more outreach, getting all the kids a Boston Public Library card, because all you need is Massachusetts address. They have to be over fourteen, so I've probably got to start with the sophomores or freshmen late in the year. And they have access to so many databases and resources there that, you know, I mean, obviously, we don't do interlibrary loan through Boston and have them send in books. But the things that they gain access to digitally are incredible.
And I'll just add on that too. Our, the CPS and the high school pays for our eBooks through the Massachusetts Library System. Within Sora, they can add their Athenaeum card and they can add their Boston Public Library card to the Sora. So once they hit Sora, they can just, they have access to everywhere.
Just one more question, I'm sorry. I, I'm wondering if you are seeing requests from either teachers or from students who are heading off to college to learn how to use educational databases such as Eric journals and such like that. I'm just curious to know if you're getting any.
I've gotten a specific request, like I know that our social studies department likes J-Store. And I found them that through the Boston Public Library. So we didn't have to purchase it because it is a hefty purchase. Thanks to, you know, I'm part of the Mass, well, we're part of the Mass Library Association. We have this and this serve. And one of the libraries put out in September, like, guess what Boston Public Library now has available to all of its subscribers is J-Store. So I was able to hook them up with that before we had to make that big purchase or find money for it. And then the other one, right now I'm working with the Science Department and they're asking for help with plagiarism. And we did, I gave them an example about, like, there's a lot of UVA students that have gotten expelled or up against the honor court, up in front of the honor court. And we started talking about that and the kids got really interested all of a sudden in plagiarism. Because they, you know, they really didn't realize they could lose scholarships and, and acceptances to colleges. And I mean, I didn't try to do a scare tactic, but I wanted them to realize it's a big deal. And so we're going into the science. She's asking me to prepare now as a backup, going into the science database and showing them how to do science research. So I'm getting that ready for next week. So, yeah, it's wonderful.
And the databases were part of the sixth grade research as well, just kind of getting them in and saying, let's stay away from Google right away. And let's stay away from Wikipedia and let's go here. So.
So great. That's wonderful. The only question I have, and I, I echo everything that's been said. I mean, this is just wonderful. And I love how you've transformed the library. Clearly, it's a safe space. When the students come in at lunch, because I'm blown away by the number of students that come in, are they actually eating lunch when they come in?
The majority.
Or is it just because they're coming in at lunchtime?
Probably maybe, maybe two-thirds, two, three-quarters. A lot of them come in just to be with their friends or they heard about the concert. They have homework to do. We also host, I forgot to mention before, VHS, Virtual High School. And dual enrollment students have to report to the library because that's in a classroom. They're kind of independent learning during that time. So, and Catherine is one of those learners there in the library. So sometimes during that lunch block, we've got students in there actually, you know, taking a course. So their, their reasons are, is a myriad of reasons, yeah.
And I, I love the visual of the sloth and the puppies and that, because I just think there's so much pressure and anxiety and yeah, come in and just watch that. That's awesome.
The pandas are the best. The mom and the baby pandas, that's the best.
Well, thank you both so much. Thank you, Jennifer, for the earlier presentation. It's great.
So great.
Okay, Mrs. Vassal, you are back up, I think, to discuss, I'm with Ms. Sarah Dellis, is she with you tonight? No, okay. To talk about the high school dropout rate.
Isn't this awesome? They come up, they talk about this wonderful program they have in the library and all of these great kids come in and having lunch. And Ms. Vassal comes up to talk about dropout. Just want to make sure that we don't miss that, okay? And I just wanted to, a couple of things I wanted to follow up on, on Jill and Becky. They do an awesome job. The kids love going in there. There's always music. It's decorated, it's bright and colorful. And I wanted to mention too, Gabe Zinser, I don't know if everyone knows this, but when he was, he played the music on Friday. He was also working on making his own guitar in carpentry class. So I think it's pretty awesome. I can't wait till we see the final product of that. I don't, I think it'll be okay if I tell him. And what Ms. Hickman calls tchotchkes, I call stocking stuffers. To make sure that we make that clear. Yeah, there was a little of it. So dropout rates. I'm going to try to do this from looking at the screen. I have a couple of notes here. So as I mentioned when I did this report last year, the DESC dropout prevention rate is always one year behind. So it's always the last year's graduating class that we're looking at. And when we're looking at the dropout, it's really not just the seniors. It's actually the cohort of students that we have for the, all four years of last school year. So last year, we had five hundred and twenty-two students. These are the number of students that were reported October one. And I know Dr. Howlett does an enrollment report. That number does go up and down. But I worked with Joanne Johnson, who I call our numbers guru. And she said that what the number that the DESC works with is the enrollment number as of October first. So what we have is five hundred and twenty-two, so that's the number that's used. Then they do calculations based on numbers that we have as of, in June. Or actually, I think it's July fourteenth as technically yet, but it's the June numbers. So last year, we had six students who were reported as dropouts. And one of those students did return this year. So then they do an adjusted dropout rate. So what we had was five students who dropped out last year. Of those five students, two of them were in grade ten, three were in grade eleven. And I had to make a point and say that zero of them were grade twelve. The one who returned, he was grade twelve, but he did return back this year. Has been working really hard to make it to graduation this year. All five of the students were, were reported as economically disadvantaged category. One of the five was a student with disabilities and two of the five were English language learners. One was a female, four were males, one was a white student, three Hispanic and one African-American or black. When we break it down, I always think it's interesting to take a look at, you know, for what reason did they drop out? And of these five students, three of them left school to enter the workforce. And I'm, I'm sure that our community understands that we have students who help with the finances with their family. We actually just had a meeting with this student recently, a week ago, who was ready to drop out. And we came up with a plan that we're, you know, executing to keep him in school. And that was exactly what he wanted to do, was to go to work full-time. We had two of the students left school, they, and did not say what they were doing. And sometimes that is a problem. And one of the things that I've learned here in Nantucket is sometimes they leave and we don't have information on how to get in touch with them. So just to take a quick look over the last ten years, from two thousand ten, two thousand eleven to two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, you can see that the number fluctuates. I think it would be interesting to do a little bit of a study as to why two thousand fourteen, there were twelve. Two thousand sixteen, there were fifteen. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, there were only three. So just, I think it's interesting just to take a look at the numbers. Additional information for our two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one students. We did have twenty-six students who transferred from school to out of state. I listed the different areas that they went to. We had eight students who transferred to in-state. Hyannis, Everett, Sheffield, I forgot to bring my glasses, I'm sorry, Northampton, Harwich. And then one student who entered an adult education diploma program. I believe that that student was part of our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program. I believe that that student was part of our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program and he aged out. So, if we could look a little bit further, or actually, what I wanted to also do is to take a look at where we are at this point for this school year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. As of March first, our total enrollment of active students was five hundred and fifty-one. And to date, we've had thirty-seven students who have left school. Two of them were pre-registered and never started. But because they were in the system, they are counted because they were there, I believe, part of the October one report. Two students have dropped out to leave the workforce, three students dropped out with no notice of what their further plans are. Twenty-three students have transferred out of the state and seven students have transferred in-state. And I believe, I'm, I'm probably gonna say this wrong, but of those seven, I believe, four of them went to private schools. So, strategies that we implemented this year to try to work with our students and, you know, decrease that dropout rate is, we've added the SEI coach, Catherine Norton, who has been phenomenal this year, has stepped in, helped out with access testing. She's even covered some classes when needed to do so. She has worked with a fair amount of our teachers. I'd have to check with her to see exactly how many. But continually, I hear teachers say, oh, Catherine came in and helped me with this and Catherine helped me with that. So, we're, we're just ecstatic to have her part of our staff this year. We were doing co-observations with administration and directors, special ed, L director, our curriculum directors, and looking at what's going on in the classroom and making suggestions on engagement strategies in the room. SEI walkthrough observations with the L director, L-supported class, or course for science and social studies. Two specific classes that we added to the program of studies this year so that our L students were getting some more one-on-one assistance. And thank goodness for Evelyn McCackern, who has been a godsend to help out with translation. One thing that because we are short-staffed, that we have employed, I probably should have added it here, is we're using student interns who are bilingual to help with the translation in some classes. And we've also just recently added a new reading class to support our L students. So, this, I've got to looking at this, I'm like, oh, this is actually pretty good. So, last year, when I made this presentation, these were our plans that we put out there that we wanted to do. And the checkmarks are what we've accomplished so far this year. And someone did remind me that the parent information nights that we were planning to do, we are going to actually talk with our L director and see if we can maybe start coming to LPAC and even, what's it called, snack, snack? Snack? Special, okay. I can't remember. It's called something different in a different district. But to also come to their meetings, so that might be a way for us to focus in on smaller groups of parents. We did have, I thought, a successful eighth-grade parent night this year, in-person. Again, we had Evelyn McCackern come and help to, you know, translate for us. And we introduced the new courses that we have, which we started looking at our preliminary numbers for courses next year. And all of the new courses that we're adding, it's amazing, the number of students who have signed up for them. And also partnering with the community school to refer students to complete their GED or HSET. And then, you know, we have, we have requested a bilingual district clinician. That just hasn't happened yet. But we've certainly made that known, that we're looking for that. So. Questions?
Great. Thank you, Mandy. Rocky, do you have questions?
What have you done, I understand that some of the students have left for financial reasons. What about the ones who've left? Do you follow up with them to see about getting them to come back to school? Or what's the follow-up procedure on that?
Thank you for that question, yes. It is a requirement that we send a letter. We actually ask students to do an exit interview with us. We certainly can't force them to do so. But we do ask that they do an exit interview. And we do send a letter with some options, either the, the HSET, the GED, options that they might want to look at. And we always say that if they want to return to school, that of course, we want to work with them to bring them back and help them to complete their diploma.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, you said you had student interns.
Yes, sir.
To help you with that. When, when does that take place, during the school day?
Yes, sir. So, it's part of the school-to-career program.
Okay.
And so, we have students that, you know, maybe they're just looking for an elective course and it's a good fit. And sometimes it just happens naturally. A teacher has a student that they work well with. The student says, oh, you know, I'd love to be your intern. And so, we just, we just make it work.
So, these students, at school-to-career, they want to become teachers?
Some do. Some do. And some of them have even gone through the training for, to be interpreters.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Marilda.
No.
Drops out, where they sit as far as credits that they have? Because I know when I worked at the community school, and I would work with guidance, when you had a high school student that was considering dropping out, it, it has to be so difficult when you know you're so close and they just can't see that. So, I just, I would be curious at some point if I could ask for that data just to see, out of the students that have dropped out, where the.
We, we could certainly do some research in that. It depends on when they drop out. So, if they drop out as tenth grade, and a lot of times, if they drop out as tenth graders or eleventh graders, it's because they've already repeated a grade. The student that I was just talking about has already repeated a grade and therefore will be at the age that they could be signed out at the end of this school year, which is why they were like, oh, you know, I want to drop out. But we did a lot of talking, we, we met with the parents. We came up with an alternative plan for the student to do a reduced day so that maybe it might be more manageable for the student. And I think the student's gonna stay and try to finish up and get his diploma. And what would happen is that they can do some credit recovery courses over the summer. And then, electives in the next school year could be courses also that they need to recover. So, they could essentially still graduate on time. We have a couple of students that are actually graduating on time this year because they did the catch-up game.
Thank you.
One thing I did want to share also, I know this was the dropout, you know, rate report, but I also wanted to share our graduation rate. So, graduation rate last year, the cohort, which means the number of students who started as ninth graders, who four years later were seniors ready to graduate in two thousand twenty-one, the cohort started with a hundred and fourteen. At the end, in their, as seniors, that cohort went down to a hundred and six. And we had a ninety-three percent graduation rate of that cohort. We actually had a hundred, a hundred and ten students who graduated last year. And that's because we had students who were of a different cohort because they didn't begin ninth grade with this group, who also joined the senior class last year and graduated. The adjusted cohort, so what the DESE does is they get these numbers and then things get reported differently. So, they do an adjusted number, actually was a hundred and one from what started as the hundred and fourteen. And the graduation rate there was ninety-seven percent. So, I, I think that that's worth noting.
Absolutely.
And if I might ask the committee to indulge me just for one minute, I wanted to just share one fundraiser that we have coming up. I think many people know that Julie Kingston, our social worker, has really battled with her health this year. And Saturday evening, there's a teacher appreciation night. I'll just share this with you. At the Chicken Box at nine o'clock. And it is a fundraiser for Julie and her family. And so, we just wanted to put that out there so maybe folks could come and help out. It's just a ten-dollar donation to, to have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Can I add to that? Just so you know, this is the fifth year we've done education teacher night.
Oh, awesome.
This is not the first one. We've given five thousand dollars each year to, Bonnie Woodley was a recipient, the Bookmobile, the Marla Lamb Foundation, the Sally Roberts Foundation. And if you can't make it, and you can go to her GoFundMe page. And if you want, you can come up and get a card and there's a QR code on it and it'll take you right to her GoFundMe page. All right? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Martin Enkloff will come up and give us a food service update on the contract.
Good evening. I don't have a presentation. This is year five of our contract with Chartwell. So, we are required by the state to go out and procure, meaning we post, we post invitation for bids. And we hope that there is gonna be people that, that apply to run the, for the school lunch program. This year, we had interest from Fresh Peaks Cafe, which is in New Hampshire. They came toward the facilities but never submitted a bid. And there was a local phone call I received as well from a person that runs several restaurants in the community. Just curious about it, saw the advertising in the newspaper. So, again, I explained everything, I forwarded the information and they didn't bid as well. So, we only received one bid and that bid is, again, from Chartwell's. I just want to discuss several things. The amount of the subsidy first is growing big time. So, we, it's been challenging and with food inflation, with the fact that we have to abide by the town bylaw using compostable plastics, so we cannot, that was factored in as well. Also, student participation was based on the rates prior to the pandemic. And those rates were increased by two percent. I am hopeful personally that that's not gonna be the case, that we're gonna see higher participation. But then again, it depends on the offerings. So, we had a email discussion and several phone conversations with the, with the district manager of Chartwell's, who you saw present to you back in February, Erin Long. And we expressed, on our, on our end, we expressed desire to bring back healthier choices on the menu, salads, wraps, burritos, or whatever that may be, containing fresh, fresh vegetables, fresh fruits, if possible, to bring back to the plate because it's been two years of wrapped-up lunches that are delivered to classrooms and the choice have been very limiting. So, they did make the concession and saying that they will do their best and they plan to reintroduce all these items to the menu, including cooked meals, spaghetti and meatballs, because we anticipate that we'll be serving lunches in cafeterias as, as was the case prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. I, I feel the subsidy is, is huge. I mean, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is an increase of eighty thousand dollars over what the budgeted subsidy was this year, which was ninety-three thousand dollars. We started this, this contract, which ends June thirtieth, on, on July first, two thousand and seventeen. And back then, the subsidy was fifty-six thousand dollars. When I came to work for the school, I should probably backtrack, in two thousand fifteen, it hovered around forty-eight and fifty-four thousand dollars for the length of the previous contract. So, we've had ten-year worth of experience and contracts that, that the subsidy has been very manageable, honestly. Again, I just want to clarify, subsidy doesn't mean necessarily that we'll have to subsidize this amount. This is a projection. We are all working with forecasts at this point. This is not a set-in-stone amount that we have to give Chartwell's. We're hopeful participation rates and, and reduced expenses, to the extent possible, obviously, would bring it towards a hundred thousand dollars or closer in that range. It's been, it's been difficult. I, I can't hide, you've heard me present the past two years. Last year, we subsidized the school lunch program to the tune of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund budget. It's, this year, I think it's much better, but this reimbursement rate we're seeing this year is gonna go away, starting next year. Obviously, this year, we, we get free lunches for everybody and we're being reimbursed at around four dollars and sixty cents. That's gonna go away, starting for next school year. We're gonna go back to the range of around three seventy, three seventy-five possibly for a lunch and around one ninety for breakfast. And that's for, that's the free and reduced rate. And obviously, we're counting that we're gonna have paying students as well. But then again, as I emphasized in the emails, with Erin, depends on choices that are being offered and the somewhat re-establishing the school lunch program to what it was prior to the pandemic. Wider variety of food, hopefully, better quality as well. So, I wanted to present this to you. We, our deadline to, to send this to the state was April first. We've gotten a two-weeks extension. I wanted to make sure that we present to school committee and hear your, your comments about it. This is, I've done this every, every time we've been out for a new contract. And with that, I'm gonna open it to questions.
Rocky, I'm gonna start with you.
From all the feedback that I got, it's kind of sad to me that there's no one bidding against Chartwell's.
Nobody. It's a very territorial kind of business, to be honest, Rocky. To, to, in the past, the first time we bid, we went outside of running it in-house to bring in an outside food service company was in two thousand twelve. And we had, I believe, I can't remember the name, not Hartland, but a different company. So, two big, two of the biggest companies bid. Back then, the choice came down to who would provide a food service director onsite. The other company, Aramark, exactly, yes. Thank you. So, Aramark wanted us to share a food service director with Martha's Vineyard, which does not work for us. We need to have a food service director onsite. And the, the first two, two years were a little challenging. There was a, a, a girl, fresh out of college, who, for lack of a better word, lacked the experience to run the program by herself on, on an island. And that's when Linda Peterson stepped in. She does what she can. She, she, she does an amazing job. She fills in everywhere. We currently have two openings. Two positions are vacant and our sub-position as well is vacant as well. So, she has to fill in cooking, she has to do everything. Ordering, financials, cooking, sometimes serving. She's, she's, she's done an amazing job, but there is only so much you can do. Our, our hope is we can, we can bring in people and fill these positions because we need to have fully-staffed kitchens in order to, for us to be, to create that additional demand that we want and to, to serve faster, better, and wider variety of choices. We need, we need these kitchens staffed, so. Thank you.
Laura. I'm just curious, is there, how long will this contract be with Chartwell's?
We, we are entering into a five-year general kind of a umbrella agreement. But every year, we, we, so this is gonna be for this school year, upcoming year, so twenty-two, twenty-three. Next year, we're gonna sign an amendment to the contract, which would basically focuses on the financial side. So, maybe we can modify down the subsidy then and everything. So, that, that's how it goes. So, it goes year by year by year. We have the right to get out of it. For non-performance and, and other, and other violations of a typical contract. But it's just, it's just, I, I foresee it being a challenge. When I spoke with that gentleman that I mentioned that owns a local restaurant, he was, he just said, I, I, I can probably help you with certain things, but this is, I can't make two ants' meat. In my business, I'm paying more for dishwashers than what you're offering for kitchen help. So, that's the reality we are living in. It, it's, it's difficult. It's, it's just difficult without increasing the prices. That was the other suggestion of Chartwell's. Obviously, that's the easy way out. Raise the prices for the paid lunches and hopefully, we can bridge that gap that way. I don't, personally, don't feel that now is the time. We're coming out of a very difficult situation. So, we'll have to, I've spoken with, with the finance director of the town. He's aware of what the subsidy would look like and he's willing to, to help us if need be. I hope we don't, we won't need to, but help us at, at the end of the year, balance our budgets, meaning the school budget is separate and the school lunch program.
Thank you. No questions. Catherine.
I was wondering, has our school always had Chartwell's, like?
Since two thousand and twelve. Before that, there was, I, I don't know the specifics, but there was, it was run in-house. So, basically, the employees that were in the kitchens were, become school employees. So, it becomes, and the, and the program itself is managed internally. Everything is being ordered by these employees and the school becomes responsible for everything.
Thank you. No, I know this is a difficult situation. Martin has handled this very well and it's probably one of the parts of his job that is, is, is less desirable. But that said, we. But that said, we really want to make sure that Chartwell is aware of the needs of our students and the needs of really serving better quality food with more choices. So we plan with, if the school committee accepts the vote to have Chartwell be our provider, that we have some caveats within the contract around locally sourced fruits and vegetables, around, you know, other things as well. Because we really want them to be cognizant of what we need. So, and again, knowing that we have a five-year contract, but the chance to review that contract each year, that will at least allow us some time, if necessary, to continue to evaluate the situation. So if we come up to next year, after a regular year, let's say, hopefully, next year, that will give us some information to make a wise decision whether or not Chartwell will continue with them through the duration of the contract.
Thank you. I'm sort of sitting here thinking, this is so interesting. We're talking about our children's nutrition. And for a lot of our students, we know that this is perhaps the only meal of the day that a lot of our students are getting. And we have to do better than what we've been doing. I've been privy to some of the lunch choices, the menu choices. I wouldn't eat it, I wouldn't feed it to my children. And I think we need to do, we've got to do something better. So if we write this contract, if we agree on continuing this contract, can we put some sort of evaluation piece into it so that we can require certain things? As everybody has said, that we want fresh fruits, vegetables, freshly made meals, not frozen. And that was one of the questions that I asked when we had the presentation on how much. And I was told that a lot of the dishes were made fresh in the kitchen. And I don't know that that's, I wouldn't say that's a large percentage from what I can tell of the menu. So I think if we could put in sort of our requirements, of our expectations for our students' menu, and then we come back with an evaluation portion so that we can have something to reevaluate in the end of the year.
I can certainly ask. I think the evaluation portion is that yearly renewal. That is a time where we can, we can ask Chartwell's to come and do another presentation, a more focused presentation. I don't necessarily feel that finance should be the only factor that we're taking into consideration. We are seeing studies everywhere on TV that nutrition is a number one problem for health issues with people and children. And we're on Antucket. I mean, it's, for lack of a better word, I always say, we always joke when we go with my wife somewhere, it's very difficult for me to go off-island and find a restaurant that can even measure up to Seagree. No offense, Seagree is a family restaurant. We have higher-end restaurants as well. It's just so difficult. Here, the quality of everything is amazing. But that is a, I don't mean to play their side. I'm just going to say, I've spoken with Linda about this. They had supply chain issues. A lot of the orders are placed for a specific product and you have to check whether you would accept substitutes. If you don't check, you're going to accept substitutes. They're not going to send you food if they don't have what you asked for. So that leaves you short. And when you check that, you might end up with lower quality product. That is a fact that people don't want to talk about, but that is what's happening across the country. Companies are emptying warehouses and sending what they have in stock. And prices are going up, obviously, food inflation, the past three months, over 6.5%. It's difficult. It's a pressure that it's putting on everybody. Again, this is by no means an advocacy for a company or for what's happening. I just want to make clear, to be 100% clear, that there are issues throughout the country with food. I spoke with a school district in Massachusetts and the woman said, "We run it locally and we've had problems." We order, you don't check, accept substitutes. You don't get products, you have nothing to serve. You end up bread and butter or peanut butter and jelly. You check, accept substitutes, you get these products that are inferior to what you ordered.
Well, I know when Chartwell's did their presentation and I asked if they would accept help from local resources, they said they would. And so, and I said, "I would work with them." And I pledge to continue to do that so that we can perhaps come to an agreement where we have them working on the program, but we can also bring in local resources and locally grown foods. Because we have to do better than we've been doing.
I do have one other question. I'm just thinking of the other institutions. So I know the hospital has a chef, obviously. What does our island home do? Do they also work with a company like a Chartwell's? I'm just curious.
I believe they were local. In my time, when I worked with the town, they had a locally staffed kitchen.
They did, thank you.
When do you need us to have the vote, the next meeting?
Next meeting is too late. We have to send to state a finalized contract by April 15th. So I was hoping tonight. And then with all the other caveats that we can, I can articulate them in an email or the requirements that are being, that we anticipate. They're pretty standard forms, these contracts. They send your checklist.
Well, it's kind of like we don't really have a choice. Because you said two things. This business, for whatever reason, is territorial. Not territorial. Chartwell knows that they have us up against the wall a little bit, too. So when you have to go to them and try to say, "We want this, we want that," I hope they wouldn't say, "Okay, that's how you're going to play it. We're out." What happens then?
I don't want to think that we're going to reach that particular exchange.
So you're going to vote tonight, correct?
Yeah, if possible. I mean, it's.
I don't know that we can.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're able to vote tonight because it's not, this was the discussion portion, which means the vote would have to come at the next school committee meeting. So I'm not sure how we can do that. Can we request another extension prior to the?
I can email to request another extension.
Just explain that for school committee purposes, we wouldn't be able to.
Okay, so it would be on the April 20?
May I ask, would we be able to potentially vote at a workshop or no?
You'd have to enter in a regular meeting.
Into workshop. So, thank you.
Yes.
Number one, the school committee is not beholden to have to elect to go into a contract with Chartwell's. So that you're all aware of the option and you can discuss that. Number two, you are not required to enter into a five-year contract. So that's another option. So, under discussion. And just to point out, I'm not quite sure if everybody understands that the community of Logan uses Chartwell's. They broke their contract with Chartwell's and are using the next.
Thank you. If I may, through the chair, I think the point is that if we decide, or if you decide that you do not want to enter an agreement with Chartwell's, then we will have to look, we will have to, I don't believe we can rebid. At this point, then we would have to think about how to do it in-house. And that's going to be another set of parameters that we would need to investigate with the town around that.
In-house, this late would be difficult. I just want to make everybody aware. Taking in another eight to 10 employees in a market when it's hard to hire anyway. Plus the medical insurance costs, which because they become town employees, that becomes a very large discussion with town. To Logan's point, it's required to be bid every five years. That's what I said in the beginning. That's why we have that yearly option. And every year, we have to update this particular. So this is a one-year contract. This is not a five-year agreement. It doesn't end on five years from now in 2027. It ends next year, when we're going to get another one of those around the same time of the year and we have to discuss that again. So the school committee has the right to refuse this contract. I just want to give you all the options. It's, we can do it. We just, I have no idea what our alternatives are.
Let me ask you, Martin, the wage, the salary for the staff currently, is that set by Chartwell's?
We've had discussions and we've increased it the past two years because there were people that were threatening to leave and they were saying that it's not competitive, which I agree. But right now, the average is around $19. The starting is around $17.51 plus benefits, so.
Oh, they do get benefits?
Yes.
Everybody?
Everybody is eligible to get benefits, yes.
And what is the length? So September through the end of June?
It actually starts July 1st. So technically, July 1st extends to June 30th, 2023.
And who's paying the benefits?
They are. So we get monthly invoices. I receive an invoice. It's a P and L report from Chartwell's system that includes the amounts that are paid to employees for wages, for insurance, overtime, if there is such, food service director, obviously, and products. And also, the report obviously contains revenues as well.
So I think we're going to have to put it on the workshop and then just enter into a.
We'll start with the full meeting.
We'll start with the full meeting and then go into workshop because we obviously can't do that tonight.
Okay, that still gives us time if there is agreement. So I can notify state that there might be a possible need for extension tomorrow and see what the answer is. But if, I think if it's ratified next week, we might be able to.
And do you feel comfortable with the language that's currently in the contract, where we could go back and have a review or an evaluation?
It's a very standard contract language that state looks at, what you've included in the contract. They have these templates and checklists. So they go through them and they review them. That's the part of the state before they ratify and say, "You can sign these contracts and enter into a contractual agreement." Does it cover things like quality of food? It's subjective. So it's very difficult to put it in a contract, unfortunately. These are not, these are softer kind of metrics, but.
I understand. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to votes, committee discussions. We have a vote to approve the Nantucket High School Spanish Diversity and Art Club field trip to Boston on April 29th and 30th. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion?
Oh, have fun.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we get into the approval of the donation coming up, I'd like to invite Chef Proch to come up and talk a little bit about this amazing donation from David and Susan Gillan. Susan's the daughter of Michael Shannon. And I know you're watching on YouTube, Susan and David. So Tom, come up and tell us a little bit of history on this.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Michael Shannon's daughter, Susan Gillan, for this generous donation in Michael Shannon's name. Mike Shannon was a chef-owner of the Club Car Restaurant, who I worked for for 15 years before he retired and I took place as the head chef. Mike was a teacher, a master chef. He never showed me a recipe on paper. It was all right there. And most of it is up here in the vault with me. I did write things down, but Mike worked from experience and I just think from feel. And if you're not feeling it, you won't make it. But he was an absolute master. I learned quite a bit from Mike and his examples, and his constant demand and passion to make everything the best it could be. Although he wasn't one to give out compliments or praise in the kitchen, he was a very generous man and he would do anything for you. So this generous gift is very much appreciated and it's going to be well-used. And I think in true Michael Shannon fashion, my students and I are going to make sure we send a postcard to every member of the committee from Las Vegas. Thank you. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But I'm in the process right now of, I have a very old photograph of Mike and myself back in the day. I had it blown up and I'm going to put it in a frame. It's going to go in my classroom. It's going to say, "In honor of Mike Shannon, the Michael Shannon Culinary Fund." So thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. The Memorial Culinary Arts Fund to Nantucket High School in the total of $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. May I have an approval, please, for the amended policy AC on the nondiscrimination?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a vote approval, please, for the amended policy JB on the equal educational opportunities?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. For the meeting minutes, may I have a vote approval for the March 22nd meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the transfers and invoices, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right, moving on to subcommittee work. Safety and security policies, anybody been meeting, negotiations?
We have met in both. And we'll meet again next week.
Good. Anybody else have any? No? Okay. Catherine, your honor, as our student council representative.
I don't really have that much to report this week other than the fact that the quarter three is ending this Friday. So students are catching up on the marking period. And that includes me. And April break is coming soon, is in two weeks. So I think a lot of students are planning on traveling, from what I've heard. So very excited for that. And during the weekend, the National Honor Society actually participated in the litter derby and it was a lot of fun. I didn't know it was so much fun picking up trash. I would actually recommend a lot of people to do it because it was a great experience. And I also saw other students who weren't a part of the National Honor Society doing it, too. So it was a lot of fun over the weekend. And the last thing I wanted to report was Mrs. Vassal's honors government class had their women's suffrage rally in the LGI earlier today. It was very fun. I held like a sign and, you know, women should have the right to vote and all that stuff. So I thought it was great, keep up with your class. It was very good. Yeah, and that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Do you have any other news that you might have received this week that you'd like to share with us?
Um, yeah. I got accepted to Harvard University. So I'm very excited to go, so.
That's great. That's terrific. Can't let you leave tonight with that. That's great. All right, so the agenda for the next meeting is April 26?
Actually, we do have a workshop scheduled. So I do hope that all of you can attend. It's on April 12th, I believe we'll have it here at LGI. And we're just going to be giving some, we will be running through the district report card that comes out each year from the Department of Education. If you would like to bring your own device, to be able to do that and look yourself on your own device, that would be great. If not, we can provide Chromebooks for you to use to look at the Department of Ed website so that we can look through the district report card together. And that will help us to understand more about the data that is provided to us each year. The district report card this year will include some things, but not others because of the modified MCAS. So we won't be seeing as much. Last year, same situation. There was a district report card, but it was modified as well. But this will give you a chance to see and drill down more in some of the data that we. But this will give you a chance to see and drill down more in some of the data that we use and that is indicative of what the district is producing and showing each year with regard to student achievement, but also with regard to demographics. So it will be helpful, not only for all of you, but also for me to be able to share that with you so that as we move forward, we'll be able to do that also with public. So that's the plan for the workshop. On the twenty-sixth, we will have the Special Needs Advisory Council, school choice participation, and we will talk about the findings and highlights from our workshop, so that the public will have that.
Great. The workshop will be at six o'clock?
Six o'clock. What day of the week is that? Is it Tuesday? I don't know why I had the fourteenth in my mind.
Okay, and then the, and then twenty-sixth. So for the agenda, then, we'll just need to have the vote on Chartwell's?
Yes, we will add that of the whole committee and then.
And I would like to, I would like to have a conversation with you or through Dr. Lapri to see about language on an addendum. That would be great. I know I missed last meeting, so I just want to give a shout-out for the Adams family. I think every year, I see it was my favorite show, but this was my favorite. It was just absolutely fabulous. Our students are just unbelievable, really terrific. And then just Mrs. Vassal and Mr. Duran came over to our, not my house, but our house, the program, on Sunday for the litter derby. And then they served them lunch and it was really wonderful. We had, I think, eleven students, twelve students, English language learners. And they came over and they christened the house, which was fabulous with all the games. So thank you for doing that on a Sunday. It was terrific. Any other comments before we adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.